We had a call from a lady today who lives over at Waterfall Glen, the condos.
Yes.
And she said there's a pothole there by the driveway.
Okay, we're on, all right.
Okay, it's 7:30, everybody.
I'd like to call our meeting to order, it is 7:30. Mayor Weaver is absent this evening. During our work session, Alderman Belzak made a motion and Alderman Kenny seconded it, that Mayor Pro Tem would be ten shower. And the vote was six-one, one being absent, and that is Alderman McIver. And we'll turn the meeting over to Ted.
Thank you. I'd like everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll, please.
Belkey.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Marques.
Here.
McIver. Shower.
Here.
Six present.
We have a quorum. Let's go into questions, comments, announcements of a general nature. Does anybody in the audience wants to come up and say anything? Gonna hold off for a little bit, okay. Let's go into approval of minutes, I'm sorry, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the city council of minutes for February 16th? Alderman Belkey, second by Alderman Marques. Any additions or deletions? The roll, please.
Belkey.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Do I have a motion to approve the Administrative Finance Committee of the whole meeting minutes for February 17th? Alderman Kenny, second. Alderman Clistic, thank you. The roll, please.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, let's go into February 23rd. Do I have a motion to approve the February 23rd meeting minutes? Alderman Belzak. Second Alderman Clistic. Any additions or deletions? The roll, please.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay. Let's approve the minutes for February 29th, the Administrative Finance Committee of the whole. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, second by Alderman Kenny. Any additions or deletions? The roll, please.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
Okay, let's go into receiving of communications. Does anybody have communications? Alderman Marques.
Thank you, Ted. I received a phone call today from a woman whose name I have, that I will give to Dan Gombeck. She lives over at Waterfall Glen, and there's a trouble with a pothole at the entrance to the Waterfall Glen condos over there. The city fixed that pothole a number of years ago, but it's come out and it's causing a problem for the residents driving in and out of the Waterfall Glen area. The other communication was a number of communications, a number of comments, questions, I received Saturday night with regard to the budgetary decision to not pick up the overtime cost for both the Chamber of Commerce as well as for the Darien Lions Fourth of July Parade. And tonight, underneath the, underneath our discussion of the budget fiscal year ending 4/30/17, I'd like us to revisit that item again.
Okay. Alderman Belkey?
Similar, I've received some communications as well, as far as the feedback on some of our budget meetings to date, including the parade specifically. So, I know that we are going forward with more discussions in the budget, in addition to discussions on raising revenues and other sources of revenue. So, I too think we should revisit that.
Alderman Clistic?
Just really quickly, this past weekend, had an opportunity to visit the Boy Scouts Troop 101 Pancake Breakfast. Alderman Kenny was there as well. I think it was a really good event, a lot of community members showed up, and so I just want to say, good job to the Boy Scouts, and the pancakes were good.
Fantastic. Any other communications? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Pro Tem Mayor. Dennis Kelly, 7200 Block of Gold Grove, sent me a call and approached Mr. Gombeck and I last week regarding some rear yard drainage issues that he's having with his property. That's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go into the mayor's report. We have Lori Rosinski from Downers Grove Township, and she's gonna talk about a little bit of presentation on Township Services.
Thank you.
Welcome, Lori.
So much, and apparently my computer does not like your TV, he made a valiant effort, so I appreciate that. Can you also pass out my business card? So, I'm Lori Rosinski.
Lori, I'm sorry, just make sure you're really talking, Mike's surveying home could hear you, thank you.
Yes, okay. So, I'm Lori Rosinski, I'm the Director of Public Relations for Downers Grove Township, and Frank Looster, our Township Supervisor apologizes, but he was feeling very ill today. And since we don't know if he's contagious, we thought it would just be best if he stayed home and took care of himself. So, this evening, I just wanted to take a little bit of time to do a presentation about Township Government. Obviously, as a village government and a board, you're public servants, you understand what it means to be a public servant. And as a township, we want to make sure that the public understands what it is that we do, and how it is that we collaborate with other organizations. So, the first round of presentations we're making are to all of the village boards, to the major villages within the township, and of course, going out into other community organizations, and again, just to educate them. So, what you have in front of you is a PowerPoint that I put together, and I'm just gonna talk about that real briefly. Of course, at any point, if you have questions, you can feel free to ask questions. I certainly don't know all the answers. One of the things that I really appreciate about our elected officials is that they're always available to answer questions. So, whether it's the highway, whether it's our assessor or our Township Supervisor, they're always accessible to answer questions. So, if there's things that you ask me that I don't know, I can either get the answer for you, or I can make sure that they get with you. So, just to start out, Township Government, like you, there's elected officials, we have eight elected officials. We have our Township Supervisor, our Highway Commissioner, our Assessor, our Township Clerk, and then four trustees. Our Highway Commissioner is Andy Anderson, our Assessor is Terry Cockrell, our Clerk is Laura Hoist, and our Township Supervisor is Frank Looster. Our Township Trustees are Kathy Abate, Greg Bolts, Lorraine Grinsby, and Mark Cuthbert. Downers Grove Township is the largest township in DuPage County, really a township and a half. And we're over 52 square miles. We're bounded by 39th Street to the north, and the Calisay Channel to the south, and Woodward Avenue to the west, and county line to the east. And there's seven primary villages that are within the Township boundaries. That's Burr Ridge, Clarion Hills, Darien, Downers Grove, Hensdale, Westmont, and Willowbrook. So, I want to talk about the Highway Department first. The Highway Department has three divisions. And by law, Townships are mandated to provide three things. One of them are highway services to those areas, or that's highway and bridge maintenance to those areas that are unincorporated, and there are some other incorporated roads in the Township that they maintain. The three divisions within the Highway Department are Forestry and Grounds, Operations, and Stormwater. They have a nine to 10 man crew that takes care of all those things. Within the Forestry and Grounds specifically, they have the Brush Division, which, you know, it's brush pickup, it's mulch and wood chip program, tree and stump removal, things like that. The Restoration Division, which includes the hydro seeding litter pickup and right-of-way reseeding. It was really educational to me, it was, you know, the Highway Commissioner was talking about row, and I didn't know what that meant, and I found out that meant right-of-way. So, the right-of-way, as defined, is usually 33 feet from the center of the road, and then ends at the property line. And then the Weed Division, and they do right-of-way mowing three times a year, and as well as trimming. The next division is their Operations, and that includes capital improvements, which is asphalt resurfing, culvert installation, pavement marking, sidewalk and curbing removal and replacement, storm sewer installation. Then they have Payment and Maintenance, which includes asphalt patching, crack sealing, gravel shouldering, pothole repair, you were just talking about potholes, and we know how bad those are, street sweeping, and snow and ice control. And then finally is the Traffic Control, so that includes guardrails, pavement remarking, signage, and street lights. And then the final division within the Highway Department is Stormwater. So, that's curb and gutter and open ditch. So, curb and gutter, they have 900-plus basins that they're maintaining, as well as storm sewer maintenance. And then Open Ditch includes culvert replacement, existing tile maintenance within easements, French drains, and right-of-way ditching. Another interesting thing about the Township is they're part of the Public Works Mutual Aid Program. So, there is a countywide program, and the Highway Department, along with other Townships within the county, are a part of the nation's first PWMA. And so, basically, what that allows us to do is to pool resources to better serve the residents in the event of a disaster. Absent of disasters, they're able to share other resources, you know, like equipment or extra manpower. They're also a part of the Community Emergency Response Team, which was started by Milton Township three or four years ago. And it's just like it sounds, it's an emergency response team, they're trained, you know, again, to work together with other communities to respond specifically to emergencies.
Lori, could I interrupt you there?
Please do.
We have a emergency program within Darien.
Fantastic.
And some of the gentlemen that are sitting behind you are involved in what we call our Alert Program, which is something the Lions Club is involved in, working with the city, where with, in case of an emergency, they're involved in that situation. Now, how do you interface with local community emergency teams?
That's a good question, which I can find out from our Highway Commissioner. I know that's broader in terms of other Townships, but I'm sure there's interfacing with local agencies, obviously. I'm just not as familiar, but I definitely can find out.
Okay.
Any other questions about that? Then we have our Assessors Department, and that's another mandate from the state as far as Township responsibilities. So, the Assessor, they maintain property records of 58,000 properties within the Township. They also determine the assessment for all property within the Township, what is the value of the property for the purposes of taxation. And then they also assist property owners who qualify with tax exemption applications. One of the things that I think is real interesting about the Township in unincorporated areas is that there's 5100, just over 5100 properties that are single residences in the unincorporated area. I think the other thing that is important to know about the Township Assessor is that all of that information is public information. So, the Assessor really wants people to come in and to check their files, to make sure that they're accurate. People certainly can go in and check the files of, you know, any record that's in there, but the Assessor is really, really wants people to be able to come in and to check the accuracy of that information. Next, we have our Supervisor's Office, and the other final mandated program for Townships is General Assistance. And so, we have a Case Manager, Gary Ostrowski. Those programs that come under General Assistance would be LIHEEP, which is Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. And then there is also Emergency Assistance, and we also have a program that we work in collaboration with the Salvation Army to provide some emergency assistance for people as well. And really, the goal of that is, you know, obviously, things can get really tight for individuals, and so to be able to provide them with some support, particularly in crisis situations, you know, it's about a hand up for individuals, and so that's a really important role that we play. We also, within the Township, it's not our program, but we do house within the Township Building the Fish Pantry, which is a food and clothing pantry that has been in the Township Building for over 30 years. So, we have a lot of residents that come in there, and it's one of the ways that they can just make ends meet, is by coming in and getting some groceries when they're in need. Something else that's really interesting that we do in the Supervisor's Office, we do passports, and I don't know if you've ever gone and got a passport, but if you go to the post office, it takes a little while. And I'm not speaking ill of the post office, because my dad used to be the postmaster in Downers Grove, but it does take a little while. And so, you can come to the Township, and we can take a picture and get your passport, and you don't have to wait in line like you do at the post office. We also do mosquito abatement. We also have, we know how to stretch a dollar, literally. In 1985, we purchased two cemeteries that are in unincorporated Downers Grove, that's Oak Crest and Oak Hill. Beautiful cemeteries, I actually, when I was growing up, I know it sounds weird, but when I would go visit my dad's family in Minnesota, we would always go and visit the relatives in the cemetery. So, I really appreciate history, and in these particular cemeteries actually have a lot of Downers Grove history within those fences. So, I think that's really interesting, and in 1985, we bought it for a dollar, and we've been very fortunate, the past year, we've had some Eagle Scouts, we've been the recipient of a lot of work. Over the summer, there were five Civil War gravestones that were installed, and then we had another Eagle Scout who built three beautiful gates. So, it's wonderful, I encourage people to go and take a look, because it's some wonderful history. And then, of course, the Supervisor's Office also maintains Township records, books, documents, things of that nature. Underneath the umbrella of the Supervisor's Office is the Human Services. So, basically, that's the icing on the cake. So, Townships, those are the mandates that I just talked about, anything above and beyond, it's really dependent on the Township and what they feel is important for their particular residents. So, for over 30 years, the Township has provided Human Services. We have Senior Services, we have Life Skills Programs, we do Substance Abuse and Violence Prevention, and we have Juvenile Delinquency Intervention Programs. With our Life Skills Programs, those are programs, we're in 22 schools throughout Downers Grove Township where we're teaching programs for students in grades third through eighth. We have two Life Skills Teachers. And we get a lot of positive feedback, schools have a lot of mandates, including National Health Standards and Social and Emotional Learning Standards. So, our programs are in line with those standards, so we're able to help them fulfill some of those standards. We have our Senior Citizen Services. And so, Hannah Benioff is our Senior Services Coordinator, and we're gonna be celebrating her 30th anniversary. Wonderful, she's an inspiration, she's 83 years old, I hope I'm like her when I get to be that age. And so, we have a lot of different programs, like Dial-A-Ride, which is a ride program within the boundaries of the Township Vintage Times, which actually is shown on local cable here, and that's a program for seniors with a lot of timely topics. Banner News is a newsletter. And then we have two Advisory Councils, the Senior and Lawman Together and Senior Advisory Council that advise on issues. These are community members that are really invested in our senior population, which, by the way, is the fastest growing population in Downers Grove Township. The last census, that age group outpaced all other age groups, and when some of them actually declined. So, and I'm gonna talk about something else that we're doing to serve that population as well. Then we also have our Substance Abuse and Violence Prevention Program. So, we have a grant from the state of Illinois, and we have two prevention specialists who provide substance abuse services for kids ages 12 to 18. One of them works in the high schools, and as well as one of the middle schools. And so, really, the goal is to equip teens to be able to make healthy decisions, and also training some of our high school students to be leaders for younger students. So, she's involved with Snowball and Snowflakes, she has a Peer Live Life Skills Program where high school students go into a middle school and teach life skills to seventh and eighth grade students. The other prevention specialist works in the southeast part of the Township that's unincorporated. There's coalition there of a number of community organizations, and so, she works with Burr Ridge Middle School, as well as a community to identify issues that are of particular interest that's based on data that we gather. And so, she's in the middle of actually working on a communication campaign to address some of the changing issues in the community around substance use. And then finally, we have our programs that work with youth who do get in trouble. And so, we actually, in this room, one of the programs that we run is Peer Jury. And so, I'm not sure if you guys are aware that last year, we engaged in a relationship with Darien. I started that program 15 years ago with Michael Campo, who is now retired. And so, we had previously had had one of the locations at Westmont Village Hall, and we were no longer able to use that space, so I talked to Brian, and we were able to secure this space. So, that actually is a program, we have three locations, and it's a diversionary program for kids who, it's their first time getting in trouble with the law, rather than getting sent to court. They get diverted to our program. It's built on a philosophy called restorative justice, which I could talk about for a long time. And it's a very successful program, and when I say successful, one of the ways we define success is that 94 to 98% of those kids, when they complete the program, don't get in trouble with the law again.
We actually brought that to DuPage County from Cook County. When I was at Oaklawn High School, Aurelia Patczynski had the Peer Jury Program in Cook County.
Yeah.
Aurelia came out here, we met at the Police Department back in the 90s.
Yeah.
And we had all the police chiefs from the surrounding area, and when we looked at a way of putting it together, we counted on you guys to be the housing body for the Peer Jury Program.
Yeah. It really is, I can't speak enough about it. There's so many benefits, I could do a presentation just on that alone, and I'm glad to hear that you are familiar with that. And we actually, I'd worked with somebody from Cook County when we first decided to bring it here. And there's a few, I mean, there's a few villages within DuPage County that are doing it, I'm, you know, I do consult with some of these organizations, we're trying to get other Townships to do it. Multi-jurisdictionally, it actually is a lot more effective, but again, I could talk about that for a long time.
We actually found that the kids were harder on the kids than the adults were on the kids.
You know, they can relate to them in a much different way, right?
Yeah.
They absolutely can. There's, yeah, there's just so many benefits to it. And then there's educational programs that I teach that are in connection to that. The last thing that we do, in September 2012, we decided to incorporate two nonprofits. One for a cemetery, because again, you know, we want to maintain those cemeteries, we want to demonstrate respect to those who have gone before. And then, one for, it's called Friends for Downers Grove Township Seniors, and I actually have, this is a rat card that I'm gonna give you. And as I mentioned, that population is outpacing every other population, you know, category, age category. And so, the intent of both of those nonprofits is to allow us to raise money in a way that we can't access as a government body, so we can support those programs, hopefully shift some of those tax dollars into other areas potentially, or expand programs. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell, what we do. Any other questions or comments, yes?
Can you touch on your Fish Pantry? Because you kind of skipped over that bullet point when you were going through.
Yeah, so the Fish Pantry is a nonprofit organization that is run all by volunteers. And so, that's housed in the basement, so there are, I'm not even sure how many volunteers that participate. It's open on Mondays and Fridays. And so, individuals that live in the Township are able to come, and primarily it's groceries, but they do have clothing and shoes as well. I wish I knew how many people, I probably should get that information, like how many people they actually serve a week.
And they don't need to be an unincorporated address, they could be, as long as they live within the Township, correct?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, good question.
Any other questions at all? Lori, most of this stuff can be found on the website too, correct?
Yes, it can, yes. And as I said, you certainly can call me, you have my card, you can, you know, anybody can talk to our Assessor, our Highway Commissioner, our Township Supervisor, myself, we're always happy to talk to people, and they can call, they can come in and visit, so, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Lori.
Lori, thank you for coming. Okay, let's move to the City Clerk's Report.
Just one item. Meet and Greet with Mayor Weaver will take place on Monday, March 21st, at 6:00 PM here at City Hall in the upstairs conference room.
City Administrator's Report?
No report, thank you.
Let's move to Department Head, Information and Questions.
Just have a couple of things.
Thanks, Chief.
This week, we had a couple of issues with IRS scams. Got a couple of phone calls, couple of emails, couple stop-ins. There's a few, there's two different ways that these email or IRS scams are occurring. One is really an identity theft, where somebody takes your identity, then fills out an IRS form, and then gets that return. So, those are really ugly, because now you have to fix your lost identity, much less the loss of the money. The second one, which is more popular, is a phone call from the IRS telling you that you owe a lot of money. And then they want you to go through this hassle of wiring them the funds, and they're also getting more information from you when they're on the phone. Actually, I had a gentleman that came in to see me and praised an officer's work. The gentleman had been scammed by the IRS. He went a little bit farther than he should have, he was asked for $6,000, and he went to and wired $2,000. Just after he finished that, he thought, that's probably not right. So, he went and saw the Police Department, and the officer was able to get in contact with the wire company and stop that payment. So, it was a lucky move, and a heads-up play by the gentleman to realize that these are just all scams. Nobody's going to, the IRS is not going to ask for personal information, and they're not gonna ask for checks or money orders or anything like that, or the phone. So, just be careful about those types of things. We had four burglaries, two of which I talked about last time, then two that day that I spoke, whatever, that would be three weeks or so ago. So, we had five burglaries since the first of the year, four of them we have really good leads on, because the investigation's ongoing, I'm not gonna give any more information than that. And then, Alderman, Marques, you had asked me about the cameras on the houses.
Right.
We have 52 cameras that are listed, 15 of which are on residents' homes. And that's about it, unless you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Question, Chief, on these IRS scams and others that come up, that come to the residents, residents gets their call, they hang up, you still want them to report those to the Police Department on 911?
They can report to the Police Department, and we'll also post two websites that they can report directly to the IRS. Okay. And take care of that.
Chief, the other thing about the cameras, what people need to know is, if they register the camera, you're not, you're only using the data if you go to the house and ask them if we could use the data.
Right, yeah, there's no streaming, there's no thing, alls we're doing is recording it, and we have an incident in a neighborhood, then we have a site to go to and visit. Yep.
Thanks.
Anything else for the Chief? Thanks, Chief. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council, residents at home, and our Lions Club here this evening. Real quick, I just want to let you know about the I-55 Managed Lane Project. As you know, this project has been on the books with the Illinois Department of Transportation for a number of years now. With that said, we've recently had a meeting with the IDOT officials, and they're looking at meeting number five, which is referred to as the I-55 Managed Lane. And for those of you that don't know, the I-55 Managed Lane is, what they're looking at is a concept of having a lane that's basically gonna be a toll. But regardless, the project encompasses from 355 to 90, 94 in the city. And on March 16th, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, at the Holiday Inn in Countryside, and the address is 6201 Jolly Road, there will be an open house. This will really be a great open house. It's really getting down to a lot of details, sound walls, what some of the lanes are gonna look like, some of the concepts. While there's no funding for this at this point, as far as construction goes, they're looking at potentially starting this in 2018. How they're gonna start it with no funding, I don't have a clue on that, but that's what I've been told. Regardless, again, that's March 16th, next one, next week, or two weeks, at the Holiday Inn, 6201 Jolly Road, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. Anyone gets a chance, please go, and whatever information we do bring back, we'll make sure we post it to the website as well. Thank you.
Dan, they're talking about sound walls on the north side of I-55 through Darien, but not on the Public Works side, not on that side, correct?
The only portion of sound walls, and this is a very key issue, sound walls will be incorporated into the city of Darien, with the exception of the Public Works Facility and potentially a couple lots to the east over there. So, those are the details, but I think there's very exciting news that they're gonna be looking at putting up a sound wall through 95, 98% of the city of Darien.
Thanks, Dan.
Joe, did you have something? Joe, did you have something?
Can you answer my question? Thanks.
Anything else for Dan? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the treasurer's report.
Uh, just one item tonight. Uh, you should have a corrected warrant, number fifteen sixteen twenty, requesting council's approval of fifteen sixteen twenty, and the amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred eighty dollars and ten cents from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended February fourth, and the amount of two hundred fifty thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars and twelve cents, uh, for a total be approved of five hundred three thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. Just wondering if that February fourth is the right date, or should that be the March fourth? Just caught my eye.
I think you're correct.
Should be the March fourth, so it'll be the March fourth payroll from last week.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, second by Alderman Belzak. Discussion, anything? Any questions? Then the roll, please.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marquise?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Let's move to the standing committee reports. Alderman, Marquise?
Uh, thank you, Ted. Tonight, the Municipal Services Committee approved the minutes of the January twenty-fifth and the February sixteen special municipal service committee meetings, and those minutes were submitted to the clerk's office for publication. And the next meeting of the Municipal Services Committee will be March twenty-eighth at six-thirty here in the council chambers.
Anybody from police? Nope.
I have that there. Next meeting is, um, March twenty-first at six P.M. And it's in the police department.
M in finance was actually canceled before this meeting, and our next budget meeting will be held tomorrow night at six-thirty P.M. Uh, let's go to questions and comments, agenda-related. Does anybody have anything on our agenda which we don't have, except for our new business?
They're gonna stick to the budget?
No, we'll wait for it, but we can actually get there.
Well, this'll be fine. If you guys wanna come up and talk about budget, please.
Are you gonna go with the budget?
Please state your name.
Yes, my name is Steve Hyatt. I'm a past president of the Darien Lions Club, and a resident in Darien since, uh, ninety-eight. And as a resident of Darien, I, uh, don't think I'm alone in wishing that we had that downtown boulevard to walk through on a day like today, and visit a friend at a cafe, and, and enjoy the hustle and bustle that would be created by maybe a train station or a beautiful riverfront, but we don't have that. You know, what really defines Darien in my eyes, and what makes me talk to people about Darien, is the sense of community that I see in so many places. Now, what created that sense of community and what maintains that sense of community is a lot of organizations working very hard. Uh, the Historical Society and the work those people do, the tree lighting ceremony every Christmas on the corner of Seventy-Fifth Street and Cass Avenue. You know, the Rotary with the backpack program, uh, the Easter recon by the Park District, and the, um, Old Lady of Mount Carmel at the Thanksgiving, Christmas, and Easter. They send out over two hundred food baskets to the needy. Women's Club sends out scholarships, and of course, the Lions Club. You know, every year, we host over a thousand residents at a Halloween party, assisted by the Sportsplex, where the children can run through the fake grass in their costumes safely, playing games and getting their pictures taken at the cemetery, and being scared by the anapetronomonics and the, uh, climbing through that inflatable obstacle course. Right? And of course, every Christmas, with the assistance from the Park District, we send out food and toys to over two hundred families. Those are the kind of things that help create that sense of community, those, those actions, those events. But what is the greatest event that the city experiences every year? In my opinion, it's Fourth of July Parade. You all participate in that. We see you there, right? And when you walk down the street or ride in the back of the convertible, what do you see? Unequivocally, a joyous event. I mean, children screaming with glee, parents and grandparents smiling, waving flags. It's truly a Norman Rockwell moment. I think it does more to bring our city together than anything we do. And even the city services, the police, both fire departments, Park District, Municipal Services, all participate in that parade. What a better way for not just the council members, but for the other things provided for the citizens of this town to display why and what it takes to make Darien such a well-run city. Well, the Darien Lions Club puts hundreds of man-hours into organizing, running, uh, this event, and I want you to know, if you don't, that it's not a fundraiser for us. In fact, quite contrarily, our, I looked at the numbers for the last few years provided by Lion Jim Kaiser. Our average spend on that is over thirty-five hundred dollars a year out of pocket. Some of that money, by the way, pays for the signs on the cars that you all ride in. But we do this out of sense of community spirit and patriotism. So six thousand dollars to pay for the police to do what needs to be done at a parade like that could mean the end of the parade, in my opinion, because it's not the only thing we do. In fact, it's really not what we really do, and what we really do is raise money to give back to people who need it. We give thousands of dollars every year to the Illinois Foundation, Lions of Illinois Foundation, that sends blind kids and deaf kids to camp, Lighthouse for the Blind, leader dogs. There are countless, countless charities and local people in need that we donate our money to. We help pay for a funeral for a child whose parents couldn't afford all of it. I would hate us to have to say we need to do less, because we would have to make the choice to have this parade, when quite frankly, we all agree the citizens benefit from it. But I think you all know this city, they benefit from it as well, and I think they should burden some of the cost to making sure that we can maintain and run this parade. So, let's keep Darien a great place to live. Thank you.
Steve, thank you. Um, just one of the statements on this. I know we're gonna revisit this along with Darien Fest as well, and just as a outside comment, one of the reasons why I'm such a big supporter of this, it not only shows what we have to offer in Darien, but you also have a lot of people that come from outside to Darien Fest as well as the parade, and, you know, they experience it. And if we can get ten families to come to move into Darien, I think it's well worth it, because one of the biggest things that any older community faces is the population tends to decrease over time. We're still down a little bit from fourteen years ago, and I, like I said, anytime we can get the exposure on this, I just think it's a great, great thing for the city of Darien. So, we will go ahead and revisit this, uh, most likely tomorrow, when we go back to budget, and we'll probably bring it up a little bit tonight too, correct? Okay. Anything else?
Art Donner, Darien resident over thirty years. Uh, I was, uh, I had the ability to actually be the person that ran the parade last year, and I've been in the community running this parade thirty years with many of the Lions guys back there, and, uh, you know, this is an economic question, you know? It, you know, we have to make choices. Mike Corn is a great guy, uh, Brian Bana, they, they have the ability to squeeze the budget, as we just heard there, uh, a little while ago. But one thing that I noticed last year is that many of the people in the community don't really know a lot of you, or the police, or the firefighters, and so forth. And the ability to have those people talk to them at the meeting and put a face on the name, for instance, with our brand-new police chief, it's a wonderful experience, because then the people are less reluctant not to get involved with city government and to call up when something's wrong in the community. They're not nervous. They meet the police chief and they say, "Okay, I'm gonna call nine-one, nine-one-one, 'cause I, you know, I wanna get involved. I, I'm comfortable with who I'm talking to, 'cause they meet these people on the street." So there's a cost that you save there by having the ability to know these people. Another thing is that, you know, uh, we talked a little while ago about the township services. With the senior citizens that we have in the community, especially a lot of them aging, you know, a lot of the senior citizens don't have the ability to, uh, take their kids to like a Disneyland or so forth. They only have the ability to move down into those chairs with their kids and watch a beautiful parade, and the band that comes down the street of the community is unique. That makes Darien unique. So we have the ability to have grandmas and grandpas with their kids to watch a parade together, which will not happen if we don't have that. And I, you know, I drove up and down with the cart last year and talked to people before and after the, the event, and it's wonderful, and there's a ton of people. You can't possibly fit that many people in this room for a night that we have at the parade of a mile and a half, that, that get to see all the people in the community. So, please keep this. We're asking you on behalf of the Lions Club and so forth. This is not money that we receive, it's just simply the police donation of their time. We cannot close the street. Without your help and the police community, we cannot close the street legally. We can certainly try, but it's not the sixties in a peace rally, we'll all be arrested. So, we would certainly like you to keep that, because we love the community. Thanks so much for your time.
Thanks, Art.
Thank you.
Yeah, Joe, please.
Uh, for the audience, uh, while I know we're gonna talk about it a little bit tonight, and we're gonna, uh, talk about it again tomorrow, uh, you know, we want the Lions Club and we want the chamber to know that there were financial considerations that were involved in all those discussions. Brian, I don't know if you or Mike wanna bring them up to date. We didn't single out the Lions Club or the chamber. We were actually looking at, uh, issues two or three years from now with regard to our budget, in terms of how we wanted to save money. And I, and I realize, we're gonna look at this again, and I think we should look at this again. But could you kind of explain why we were looking at cutting the budget? Cause this, this, I think, has been one of the toughest years that I've sat here in nineteen years in terms of budget-making, but could you, you comment on that?
Sure, sure. Um, well, our budget, uh, process consists of a, uh, a budget for a fiscal year, and also two years of projections. And for the last nine years, I would say, the city has not, uh, been raising revenues, the property tax, you know, we, we have not been raising the levy. They always add that small one percent, which is a few dollars. And the only new revenue we've really had, if I'm not mistaken, is the gaming revenue. We've started seeing about a hundred thousand dollars a year in, in that revenue, but also our gas, uh, our natural gas tax is down this year, because gas is, gas is so cheap at home. So, you know, our revenue has not been growing, and the expenses have grown or even stayed the same. So, over the last several years, we have seen a cross in our, in our revenues that have been able to sustain our projects and all of our city services. But again, a number of years ago, the city separated what we call maintenance budget items, gas for the cars, salaries, things that are, are necessary to run the day-to-day operations, and then we created a column that are called discretionary. They, they, they were deemed in, uh, important by the council, but not necessarily critical, essential, basic services we provide. So, uh, this year, the city council has had several meetings, spent a number of time talking about, um, the revenues that, you know, would need to be generated in order to sustain projects, and, and the city council took a look at, at a lot of the, um, discretionary items. Now, it was, it was a little bit, I guess, not a surprise or, or confusing, but I know Alderman, uh, Belzak missed one of the meetings, so I had to update him about the, about the expenses for the festival, or for the Fourth of July Parade, and his question was, "Well, we, we already covered that." So in a sense, the council did, when they got to municipal services, they saw a line item for barricades, and that prompted a discussion, kind of looking back a little bit at the expenses for the Darien Fest, for the, uh, for the parade, Fourth of July Parade. And the city had already taken out, uh, an annual donation that it had made last year, and it had not made it some of the years previously for the, uh, DuPage Senior Citizens Council. So there was a number of those things that the city council looked at, but it, all anybody has to do is take a peek at the budget meetings, and, and you'll see, uh, what the council looked at, and tried to eliminate from what already anybody would admittedly look at as very, very lean budget, focusing primarily on our essential, uh, essential items. And then what, what's, you know, looming over all of this is the, uh, state, lack of a state budget, threats by the state to take a lot of the municipal revenues, minimally over a million dollars a year. We don't have that. Um, you know, that's not been definite yet, but certainly, you know, you know, you need to do is, is Google that, and you'll see a ton of articles with, uh, you know, where the income tax should go, more of that should go to the state. So I think the council has been, you know, and the staff has been a bit more, um, concerned this year with the budget, although we proceeded with the budget, um, assuming that we'll continue our state, our revenue from the state, and that will not be reduced at all. But, you know, it's, it's a, it's a combination of those things that, uh, came to the last meeting, where there was discussion by the council to, you know, again, not soul out, not, not pick any particular organization in general, but more look at the city. What are our core expenses, and what are our, um, our discretionary expenses? And I think anytime a city council is having to look at increasing, uh, taxes or revenues, whatever, you do take an extra hard look at your expenses. I mean, that's been my experience in thirty years. That's, will generate a lot more discussions. I think Alderman Belkey mentioned that, even at a budget meeting. If we're gonna go to the, the public and say, "We need these revenues," I'm sure the public's gonna wanna know, "Well, why do you need these revenues?" And there's a few reasons, but again, recap primarily because we have not, the city has not raised revenues in, in a number of years. So this, again, this third-year, um, uh, what I'll call deficit in the capital projects fund is not a surprise to the city. It's just now that we're, we're into our third year of the budget forecast, we're are starting to see those, those revenue and expenses finally cross. So I don't know if that's, answers your question, Joe, it's kind of a long-winded.
Yeah, plus in addition to that, it was the, our contribution to the police pension fund increased, which basically comes out of our general fund as well.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the, our property tax, the city's property tax levy, not, not the levy from the schools or everybody else, but just the city's portion has not gone up in a number of years. However, whatever the city collects primarily is for police pension, and there's about four hundred thousand dollars a year that goes to our general services. Well, every time the, the pension increases, that takes, and our levy doesn't increase, that just takes more of the property tax for the police pension and leaves, and leaves less for general services. And that was a cognizant decision by the council for many years, in order not to raise property taxes.
And I guess for whatever it's worth, I, for me to interject, if you recall the first meeting that night, I put it upon you, the alderman, to get out with your constituents and find out what's important. And I think everybody agrees that the core services, safety and security through the police department, and our infrastructure through our, our municipal services department is very important. And I prefaced it with that, because we knew we were gonna be crossing over in the third year, and I think all we said, we're basically gonna be looking at paperclips this year. So everybody took the responsible action. Uh, I think you know, I mean, I feel sort of like an idiot. I think I've been the only member on this council. I mean, you can look at me over several years. I've never believed that city funds should be used to support not-for-profit organizations. I fought against it for the VFW several years ago. I fought against the contribution to the Meals on Wheels. Again, I feel like an idiot, because I'm arguing against poor people, uh, old people, uh, the VFW. I did it with the Historical Society. Again, I don't think it's our place to do that. And I think as you all looked at it this year, we did eliminate, as Brian indicated, the Meals on Wheels program. Last year was supposed to be twenty thousand, we only gave them ten thousand. They've had to cut back from five, five times a day to two times a day, I think, as of the first of the year, because of their budget shortfall, and they've been eliminated completely in our budget. So I think it's important, while I know the residents, I mean, everybody loves the parade, and you guys do a fantastic job. I can't give enough credit to the Lions, to all the organizations. You're absolutely right that we have so many organizations that devote so much time and attention and really, uh, help the community, uh, but again, what should our role be? And that's where, again, I, I don't get to vote on these things, I just get to complain about a lot of things, uh, whereas you all, as aldermen, have to decide. Is it, do you want to talk to your constituents, and do they wanna pay additional money and revenues through increasing taxes? For what purpose? Again, I think we've all agreed on the safety and the infrastructure and the other things, and not just the Lions, everything else, including the paperclips. I think we've been doing a good job at looking at this year, and that's sort of where it fell out.
Mike, can you just make a couple comments? Because I don't want the residents, you know, sitting at home, or, or anybody, any resident saying, "Oh, my gosh, the city's broke." It's, it, you know, we have a financial plan, we're not broke, we've really been, you know, but you, you always can talk about that a little bit.
Right. As you indicated, as you look to the third year here, we were at a, where we didn't have sufficient funds to put into the infrastructure, into the maintenance of the road and things, where we would have a deficit, not this year, not next year, but the third year. So we, as a responsible council, give you guys a lot of credit, we do a three-year forecast, and said, we need to try to do things to address that now, because if you get to that third year, while it's a, was a deficit of about half a million dollars, if we were able to project out to the fourth and fifth year, which Brian has done for some future discussion here, we're spending about three and a half million dollars a[1709.41] we're spending about three and a half million dollars a year on infrastructure. Well, the increases that you see that we're proposing, even when taxes that we are considering are only in the range of about a million, a million and a half. But then, as you keep going out farther and farther, those things keep getting more expensive. And they have to be, again, if those are our core services that we have to provide and if we decide these other functions are part of our core services too, it's up to you to, to talk to your constituents. And if they say, "Hey, damn it, I, I agree with the, we should have the parade. We should have Darian Fest and I'm willing to spend an extra $25 on real estate taxes or whatever." That's, I think, is your responsibility. I mean, Brian and I can put together the numbers. It's really up to you to go to see what your constituents feel is the appropriate use of those funds.
Now, I wanted to make a point about some of the numbers that we're looking at and all these capital projects that we have. I think everyone would agree here and I'm a strong proponent for, you know, keeping our property values up. This is very important to the infrastructure, you know, house values, et cetera. That's one of the reasons why a lot of people flock to this area is the good school systems and, and such in place. However, the other important thing is a sense of community, which I think that's why we're all here, why we all love to live. It's hard to, it's like an intangible kind of thing, you know, it's there. And it's people like you and your group that make the time to come and tell us what you're thinking and what you're feeling. So, I really want to say thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to communicate that to us.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, everybody. Let's go to old business. And since there is no old business, we're going to move to the consent agenda. We only have one item, so there is no consent agenda. So, we're going to go to new business. I'd like a motion to approve consideration of a motion granting a waiver of the $50 a day.
Sorry, I, I don't know that the members that are leaving know that it'll be some more discussion. We've said it, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, there's, there's going to be further discussion.
More discussion a little bit as well as tomorrow on this.
This evening.
If you want to stay.
Well, I, I think that, you guys were leaving. I wanted to make sure you all, you all knew, yeah, that the, there's, actually, on the agenda tonight is the budget. So, there'll be some continued, continued discussion. I just want to make sure you guys, nobody left. So, I think this is under public comment period. So, maybe you would ask the resident if she wants to come up.
Would you like to come up and speak about it?
Ma'am, you'd have to, there's people at home that would like to hear your comments. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joanne Kamel. I've been in the neighborhood for over thirty years. And it's, it's an embarrassment. Why are these stores empty?
Are you talking about the center, Joanne?
The center.
Mr. Godbeck can address that.
Dan, can I just offer one before you start? Because you have certainly a lot of the detail. But what, what we sent out in direct connect, and I, I try to remind people, when the city council had that property up for sale and had a sale agreement with ultimately the people who purchased it, there was a section in there that required the developer to tear that building down even before he had tenants, which was, which was actually pretty unique and not financially what a lot of the developers do. So, the developer capitulated and agreed with the city council because that property was such an eyesore. So, I, I think the term, in terms of the length of time it's taking to lease, the alternative would have been that building might still be up if the, you know, if the landlord.
Were you getting taxes on those renters? You weren't getting anything on it?
A small amount of revenue. The, it was, it was very small taxes, much more taxes now with the, with the improvements. But it's, it's pretty de minimis. But in terms of why there's vacancies, I, I could tell you that has added tremendously to the vacancies because the developer agreed to knock the building down and start the project before he had 50% or more leased. And anybody that knows real estate will say, "Wow, that's a, that was a pretty good deal for the city." Because the goal in part was to get rid of that junk that was there, the environmental issues. So, that, that's why we're, you know, that's why there's vacancies today. But Dan, you can talk much better to what is going on at the building itself.
We've been in contact with the developer on a weekly basis. I can't tell you right now that they're looking at a coffee shop. They're also looking at, basically, all the spaces that are, that are there today are basically all spoken for, okay? And I keep on saying, basically, until there's something that comes to the city hall with a building permit, they're all rumors to, to me as far as I'm concerned. Sprint is there right now. We also have a nail salon that's recently picked up a building permit. So, they'll be opening up shortly as well. And there's other tenants out there that are very, very interested and close to the bottom line. I'm sorry, it would look sad.
It looks very sad. That whole strip.
Would look sad.
That there's nothing happening.
Well, again, the opt, the, the alternative would have been that, that old building would still be up. So, in, in terms of, you know, how it looks and what, we all, we all want that center to be filled. And they're working very diligently to do that. And, and as Dan's mentioning, it'll be filled in the near future, yes.
Okay, this is almost a year, isn't it?
We built it and it was finished in August, wasn't it?
We have a fountain and no.
But, but again, the developer took on that risk to build prior to solidifying tenants, which everybody wanted. So, the fact that it's vacant longer than we wanted was not a surprise. You know, that was kind of an expectation. But again, the alternative would be that old building and the vacant properties would still be there. So, everybody wants it leased very bad. And Dan's, like Dan said, he's in communication all the time. And, and I think in the very, very near future, we'll be very happy with the tenants in there.
And keep in mind, there's a limited list of who can go in there, what type of retailers the city council has agreed to. We can get services such as dentists, doctors, gaming, I'll refer to them as gaming parlors tomorrow. But again, we want to have a mix of retailers that the community can enjoy.
And the parking is not going to get any bigger?
I'm not seeing the issue with the parking.
There's just not that much.
Parking's sufficient by our codes and it met all the requirements, yes.
Yes.
I thought maybe that was, was why they weren't being that attractive.
No, that's not the case at all.
Okay, it's just empty. That's what I keep seeing every time I go by there. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Let's go back to new business. Do I have a motion approved consideration of a motion granting a waiver of the $50 a day fee for the Class J temporary liquor license for the Darian Chamber of Commerce? Alderman Belkey, second, seconded by Alderman Belzak, discussion? Roll, please.
Belkey?
Hi.
Belzak?
Hi.
Clistic?
Hi.
Kenny?
Hi.
Marquise?
Hi.
Shower?
Hi.
Six i's, one absent.
Let's go to budget meeting fiscal year ending 4/30/17. How do we want to start with this, Brian? Want to go a little?
I just have a few notes if I can clarify. A couple of questions that were lingering from the last meeting. And then the, the intent was to go through tonight with the memo I distributed to the council on March 4th in terms of, of revenue enhancements, increases. So, just a couple of things. Dan had looked again at that Expedition versus the Explorer. And, and what I'm, what I'm talking about now, we'll, again, we'll be able to bring forward when we actually bring the purchase request before the city council during the budget. This sets the money in the budget, but anything over $5,000 comes back to the city council. So, we did have the Expedition, the difference between Expedition and Explorer ended up at about $5,000. And Dan had discussed this more with, with the staff and felt the Expedition was still the proper vehicle, especially in the street, the street division with the number of equipment they're carrying, they're bringing to jobs and having in their truck all the time. The second was, we looked at the two chippers. There was two chippers in the budget for the same, for the next fiscal year. And the council had asked about maybe moving one of those or if there was economies of scale if we bought two. Well, we found there was no economies by buying two. And we are moving the, one of the chippers into fiscal year 18. And we, we again, have looked at that with the mechanic. And if we were to have any significant mechanical problems with the second chipper, we would just come back to the city council. So, we'll try to keep that going for the next year. One other item that was kind of on the back burner in the capital projects, we had a, a project on the list but not funded. And it was a 75th Street landscaping plan from the county. They're going to bid tomorrow, but originally, we had about, we had $106,000 in that budget. Dan had talked to the county and tried to reduce that number a little bit based on the discussion with the city council when Dan presented the project at a council meeting. That revised number is $76,400 plus a 10% contingency. So, the, when the council talked about that, when we reviewed it with Dan, we were trying to wait for some more information. This kind of just came in. So, if that is a project the city council's interested in, we would have to talk about adding that into funding. The county is, is, again, they're going to bid tomorrow and they're kind of pushing us for an answer because they'd like to issue the contract. So, if we do not do any enhancements, the county will go forward with their base project. But if the city council wants to add the additional enhancements to that, we want to let the county, the council know tonight in case there was discussion or they wanted, wanted to add that in.
Dan, the, the architectural lighting would go up before the landscaping, correct? The new lights on Saturday?
Correct.
That's going to start this spring, though.
Actually, it should be, it's getting ready to take off. They're in the process of having locates out there and finalize and some of the equipments. So, the answer is yes.
Okay.
Now, we approved the chipper last week, correct, from what I remember?
One of them, right?
One.
All right, and the other ones pushed off, so we don't have to worry about that.
Correct, yeah. We, we followed up on what the council's question, correct?
I know we approved the Explorer. Who's, can we talk about the Expedition now or should we?
Well, the Expedition was the approved vehicle, but there were some questions on it because we didn't know, the question came, does the, does the street division need the larger vehicle in the Expedition versus the Explorer? And at that point, we didn't know the cost differential. So, I thought, at some point, we thought maybe it was 10,000 or 12,000. We didn't know. Dan has checked. That cost differential, again, is about $5,500.
So, the number that we had from last week was pretty much, pretty accurate from what I remember?
It was reduced. It originally was $38,152. Dan talked to the dealer and the vehicle would be $36,704 when it was all said and done. And the Explorer, a similar Explorer would be $31,123 for difference in $5,581.
Okay, let's take a vote on the Expedition since we have, we can do that, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a binding vote. It's what you want us to include in the budget that will come back to the city council.
Who's in favor? And staff feels that the bigger, the larger vehicle is warranted, Dan?
Correct. And I have our statement from Dave Fell, if you'd like me to. I'd be more than happy to read that.
Sure.
The street division forming vehicle is used to transport equipment material for various projects and assignments. It's used to set up and move what we refer to as the blue construction notification, such as the road program, such as the crack fill program. And again, keep, keep in mind, there's about anywhere from 10, approximately 10 of these signs. And they're the bigger signs that are put on what's referred to as A-frames. So, obviously, it's pieces of steel that get hauled around day-to-day during probably three months out of the year because we have different programs happening, whether it's the concrete, crack fill and/or road program. In addition to, Mr. Fell carries the traffic radar study equipment, obviously, a laptop, which is not that big. There's small parts and supplies for rear yard ditch projects, garden, you know, storm sewer supplies such as garden boxes, miscellaneous pipe fittings, wheel connector, wheel counter connectors, clamps, small tools, and occasionally even barricades. You know, it was, I meet with, excuse me, on this, let's see.
The bottom line, he needs the space.
Transports, transports contractors for purposes of layout, job review and introductions. Also, and I didn't realize this till you brought this to my attention, was the aero board. The aero board is basically tow behind on this vehicle for certain programs. The vehicle is also used as an office, which makes the Expedition a better choice just for the room.
So, the bottom line, he needs the space.
What's the, what's, what's the differential in square footage, interior square footage on these vehicles, you know, per se?
You know, I couldn't tell you. We, we know that it's a small, we know it's a smaller vehicle just based on past experience, seeing these vehicles out there.
And it sounds like you, you have a lot of equipment. My question then would be, would it be more cost efficient and be, get more use out of, say, like a van as opposed to, because you could probably put more stuff into a van? I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking a question, so, okay? And I'm guessing a van would probably be cheaper than an Expedition.
We had a van, we had a van earlier several years ago and it just, it just wasn't part of the fleet.
Well, Dan, I don't know about the, the drives on the vans. I don't know if you get four-wheel drives in vans. I think they're probably primarily, primarily rear wheel. And somebody like our street guy is out in, I mean, that would be a huge difference in terms of the van, you know, the four-wheel drive versus some kind of rear wheel drive.
Right, we got rid of the van from the fleet, the entire fleet several years ago. It just did not fit the operations or the logistics.
Okay. And what's the life expectancy of this?
Easily 12 years.
So, we're looking at, over the life of it, $500 difference?
Yes.
A year?
Correct.
So, who's in favor of the Expedition for the 36704? Please raise your hand. Okay, that's 6-0, so let's keep that in there. All right, let's talk about the Fourth of July parade as well.
Mr. Alderman, is, can you just, if you can just get comments on the landscaping for 75th Street? I just want to see if there's a consensus of the council to include that in the budget. If there is, we would want to come back actually next council meeting because it would require an intergovernmental agreement with the county. And if the council's not interested, then we can advise the county that will not be.
Well, what is the difference between what the county is proposing, which would cost us $76,000 versus just what they were going to put in there? What's the difference, Dan?
Basically, what it is, is after our last city council meeting and some of the feedback, I went back to the county, to the design, a design person in conjunction with DuPage County officials and said, "We need to reduce the scope of the work." So, basically, what happens is that the, the number of plants has been reduced. So, it's not as, call it filling. Still, aesthetically, it would look very good. It's just be, be less plants.
And Dan, you brought the, you brought the plans to the city council meeting when you talked about it. So, it focused on what intersections? Maybe just again, if you were driving by, what would be the difference you would see driving by versus, you know, the county basic versus the change?
Well, let me back up a second. What it includes is the intersections at Plainfield and Cass, that's eastbound, westbound 75th Street. Cass Avenue, eastbound, westbound 75th Street. Williams and Adams, eastbound, westbound. So, all those intersections would be enhanced for approximately, from the edge of, from the intersection back approximately 250 feet. Originally, we had grasses, more perennials. So, we went back to the landscape architect and said, "What can we do to still sustain the beauty of this and to reduce the costs?" They pulled, the landscape architect pulled out certain items where the bottom line or the end effect would be still a nice visual, aesthetically pleasing landscaping. I do have the boards here. So, what is, does that mean we're going to have 12 tall grasses versus 20? We have the lists. So, it's all contingent upon the bid opening. But I can't tell you that, you're going to, you probably will see a little more space where it was more dense prior to.
And Dan, on future maintenance, it would be our responsibility, which is again, on something like that is primarily making sure weeds aren't growing and infiltrating. So, we, we anticipate we would, in future years, add about $5,000 to, in order to maintain that so it doesn't look like garbage after it's already been planted.
We have to talk about getting this, if we approve it, the bid for tomorrow, correct?
The bid opening is tomorrow, correct.
All right.
No, but I'm, I'm sorry. Really, what we would do, if the council wants us to pursue that, in two weeks from tonight, we would bring an agreement back to the council.
If we push this back a year, how much higher would this be later on? Do we know?
Difficult to say. I mean, right now, what's driving, what's driving the entire bid is DuPage County is bidding for trees on 75th Street. And I believe it's 55th Street landscaping too. So, is there some economy of scale? Be very difficult to say.
Well, Dan, if you don't do it now, you're going to rip up some of the grass they've put in, just the normal grass. So, there would be some tear up of what they're doing this year.
Correct. And in conjunction with that, there's, will be some, and right now, I'm going to say de minimis. Cost savings, because the street lights are going in, is the street lights are going and there's going to be restoration that will be required down certain parts of the median. So, by dovetailing the landscaping after the street lights, we wouldn't be paying for the cost twice. Or the county wouldn't be paying, whatever the contract is broken up into, there's an opportunity for some, again, I'll say de minimis cost savings.
So, Dan, I have a question, just so I understand this correctly. So, the $76,000 is not in the budget at all, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's in there as a line item where I didn't add any money for that.
Okay, and then I don't know if I got the answer to what you just asked, which is what would be the cost that if we just left it basic with the grass? What's the cost differential?
There is no, there is no differential, zero.
Yeah, but if we have to go back and we have to replace sod because they've torn up grass due to putting light posts in, there's going to be a cost to that.
Correct. And I don't have that cost because, you know, what are they going? The way the other contractor said, there's some boring in there. So, depending on what the utility conflicts are, it may be more economical to bore underneath there versus open digging. So, I don't have that. It may be 5,000 and maybe $10,000.
You know, the only thing is, that, those intersections have been improved with the redevelopment of the streets. And it's our central area to our city. We have a new center on the corner. We're asking businesses to make improvements to their properties. If we don't do the, this is a way of enhancing. We, we spent, we spend money on infrastructure, ditches, road programs. I think that spending money on enhancing the appearance of, especially the 75th and Cass intersection is critical to me. I think it needs to look nice. People see that when they drive through our city. So, I think it would be worth it to, to do that. I think that's my personal opinion.
And keep in mind, the landscape architect, the city did not have to put on any cost for that. That was all picked up by DuPage County. So, there's a value in there. I, I don't want to assign a value to that, but we know what architects and engineers' services cost.
I spoke to, excuse me, I brought this up to a few residents a couple of weeks ago. And one comment I get all the time is, "Bridges can keep your downtown really nice. Why can't we do it?" So, I'm for it. So I'm for it. I'm, I'm, we got a lot of feedback from the residents that they'd like to see this in. I, I brought the cost up as well. And they said the enhancements they see in the summer in Bridges going downtown and different areas. And since we don't have a nice downtown, this would also enhance the area as Mr. Alderman Rakey's mentioned as well.
Think I've said it before too, is when you drive down Seventy-Fifth Street, east or west, especially west on an evening when the sun's going down, you can see the whole tree line in the medians with the mature trees that we have and how well those are kept. I think it really just adds an ambiance of its own, you know, to patrons.
Dan, is there any possibility of partially doing this, or do you have any breakdown of what doing, you know, Cass and Seventy-Fifth and not doing the rest or anything like that?
I asked, I requested the county if we could do that in the contract. It's an all or nothing. The county felt that that would be too much, too many options, number one. And then if there was one bidder that was higher, they would end up negotiating, you know, potentially negotiating. So it could really turn into one nightmare in that particular case.
Joe, what do you think?
I think you kind of have to, because if you've got all the engineering costs that are already into it, and, you know, Alderman Rakey says they're going to be putting the lights in, and if you don't put the sod in there, you're going to be ripping it up and putting sod in again. So I think it's, it's a, it's a necessary evil, especially, you know, with, with the plan that we were trying to. You know, I've, I've heard that from residents myself, with, with Alderman, Klesak is saying that, you know, we don't have the downtown like we have at, say, Downers Grove or, or even Westmount for that matter. You know, this is, this is our, this is our, our town. Now, that being said, we're, we've got to sharpen our pencils and figure out how we're going to do this because three years is coming down the, down the pike.
Tina?
Well, if, if you're saying that it, you know, it's basically a no-cost type of situation with just having grass. I mean, we need to replace the grass or the sod. And considering all the other enhancements we're already going down the road with, such as maybe new banners and lighting and, you know, spending money on landscaping and the clock tower area, I'm, I would say no. I would say it's, it's unnecessary at this point. I think everything is cleaned up already as it is with the, the different configuration of the street. The streets are clean. The businesses are looking a lot better in that area. Again, and with those other enhancements, with the banners and, you know, I think that that's a way to do it because there, those have been approved. So I think that that's almost overkill. I mean, if it wasn't for the fact that we're looking two years down the road and the state and all that kind of stuff, I would be more apt to say sure, but I would have to say no.
I guess Alderman Belzak, in addressing your concern, could we do a little bit less? We could. We could put it off till next year. We can see what they do and maybe decide to do this intersection, that intersection, next year on our own. Granted, if we wouldn't get the economies of scale, but we may be able to do two intersections ourself for thirty-five thousand instead of all of them for seventy-seven or eighty thousand.
Would we, would we be allowed to do that if it's, if it's a county road?
We would have to apply for a permit. Along with that permit, we would need plans. It's, in this case, it will be architectural drawings. And I'm not sure if a traffic, again, I'm not sure if a traffic review engineer would be required to look at that because obviously, it's the intersections.
So what do you think on, on engineering? Twenty-five thousand just for the engineering to set?
I'm going to be, I'm going to be conservative and just say ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
And we might be able to take the plans, Dan, that are there too. We, we haven't asked, we haven't researched that yet, but a possibility is to take what the county's already done and, and maybe rebid a portion of that, but we'd have to check that further.
Dan, we have to have a decision tonight on this. We can't wait till tomorrow night's discussion because I'll be honest with you, I'm kind of torn on it. I really am.
Well, you really don't have to, maybe I wasn't clear. We have to let the county know in an intergovernmental agreement next, two weeks from now.
Okay.
That's when we have to know. We don't have to know tonight. We want, we want to know so we could tell the county how to proceed and so we could tell them, you know, the council's intention on the agreement. But we had told them that we could, we can't formally approve the intergovernmental agreement for two weeks anyway.
So we can give them a tentative yes today?
We give them a...
That we're not bound by?
Yes, we're already at that point now. It's just a matter of, by, our next city council meeting is on the twenty-first. By the twenty-first, we're going to need to have that decision. Again, what we could do is, again, the bid opening is tomorrow. And I guess we could have that information for tomorrow or send it out to the city council tomorrow as soon as we get the results and then talk about it tomorrow night.
Yeah, I don't know what the relevancy that has. I'm not, I miss, I might be missing something.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe things will come in at fifty thousand. I don't know. Or they might be at a hundred thousand again, so, um...
But we'll have those numbers tomorrow.
So then, I mean, the county's bid opening tomorrow, will they have tabs for you?
Yes, and it's, it'll be unlike the state where we're going to have to wait till there's a...
And if they didn't have tabs in two weeks, if we have a draft intergovernmental agreement, we would have the final numbers. So, you know, if, if the council, if it's in the budget or not, you know, and the council wants to do it, we would make the adjustment. If the council doesn't want to do it, we would make that adjustment. But it just, again, it took a little more time to discuss, and it didn't, wasn't in the original. That's why I wanted to mention it tonight.
Okay, so last thing, we got Tina, no. Tom, what are you thinking?
Well, I'm leaning yes, but if we don't, if we can kick the can down the road, uh, until we get solid numbers, I'd be in favor of that.
I feel that way too. So if we can get those numbers tomorrow, that'd be terrific. All right.
If not tomorrow, definitely two weeks.
Okay, perfect. Let's talk about Fourth of July parade and Darien Fest. Please, Joe.
You know, we talked about this, this was a decision we made over two weeks ago, and I think we kind of made this decision. We, we actually made two decisions that night. We took a look at the fest, we took a look at the overtime for the fest. And then right on the heels of that, we made a decision on the parade.
And fireworks too, now that you're thinking about it.
Fireworks, and if you remember that discussion, we made, we had an extensive discussion on the chamber and contributing to the overtime, but there was almost virtually no discussion on the parade.
Seventeen minutes. I went back, I, I had the same thought of you. I went back today, looked at the video, and went to, it was, it was a seventeen-minute discussion.
The chamber was a seventeen, and that...
No, the, the Lions Club, the parade was a seventeen-minute discussion.
I don't remember that being, I remember it being a really quick...
I, I had the same thought you did, and I, I checked it today.
Well, I stand corrected, but at the same time... Okay, I'm, I'm biased to a certain extent because I belong to this organization, but I, I agree with a lot of things that were said tonight. And one of the things that I think we really need to keep in mind, my comments that night were really, that the chamber really needs to rethink Darien Fest. I really believe Darien Fest needs to be more of a community event. I think it's grown out of what it was intended to be twenty-five years ago. And I think that the chamber, because of our actions two weeks ago, is seriously looking at some alternatives in terms of how they're going to do this. And I think the thing to also keep in mind with regard to the chamber, and Clara may argue this point, but the Chamber of Commerce sells tickets, and they make revenue from this. And they use that revenue to pay salaries and to pay bills. It basically supports them financially. When the Darien Lions Club run the Fourth of July parade, they don't raise revenues. They spend money. They don't bring anything in by running the Fourth of July parade. If the Darien Lions Club has to pick up the cost, and even if you reduce it to two thousand dollars or, or three thousand dollars, that's two thousand dollars or three thousand dollars that don't go to some other local organization that could benefit from that money. Because everything they raise, they give out, whereas the chamber keeps that money internally. So I, I think that was a critical issue to take a look at. And that's something I've thought a lot about over the last couple of weeks. And I had that pointed out to me a lot Saturday night by a number of my, one of my, a number of my fellow Lions Club members, but it's something that I was thinking about as well. So I, I really think that we, and, you know, and not that I'm going to go back and forgive the chamber, but we made a decision in March that's going to impact the chamber in September, and it's going to impact the Lions Club in July. And to me, that seemed like, you know, most organizations fit their, have their budgets all set. They're ready to go out and they're book groups for the, for the fest. The Lions Club is already starting to formulate their plans for the parade. And then we hit them and say, "Now you got a five-thousand-dollar bill in addition to that." If we're really going to look at this, and for these guys, for the sake of these people here, we really are facing some critical budget issues down the line. Ditch projects, road projects, and we are, you know, if, if anything, we are a very conservative group of people up here, and we're not looking to punish an organization. But in this case, I, I really think that we really need to go back and revisit that parade and the money for that parade. And I don't know if any of these gentlemen have seen those figures there, but Brian gave this to us today. The overtime cost for the police was twenty-nine sixty-nine. The municipal service overtime was nine fifteen. The anti-frain supplement was seven ninety-six, and the barricades were seven hundred and fifty. So that was a total of five thousand, what, four hundred and thirty dollars. And that's where that money comes from, just so the organization, so you guys know that. But I'd like to see the council reconsider that, and that's where I'm at.
As am I, if I could talk.
Charlie, please.
I, I wasn't here that day, and, and what I find surprising about that day is, and I've watched the entire tape, is it seems like the council that I left on the seventeenth was a very different council that I returned to on the twenty-third, and then I went back to the same one on the thirtieth, or whatever our last day was. I don't know what was in the water that night, but it seemed like the sky was falling that day. And I get it. I know we have, you know, a half a million dollars increase in the pension in the next two years. You know, I understand that. But the, the money that we're talking about in these two events are one-quarter of one percent of our budget. So if we were to eliminate them, it's really not going to help us with the police pension down the road. Again, I know every little bit helps, and you don't spend money foolishly. That said, I don't think it's a foolish thing on either of these events. I think we should keep these in the budget for this year. And I also think we should maybe, in goal-setting, discuss what, what our role is in the future on all of these events. I mean, because if, if we're going to, if we're going to eliminate funds for these events, to Joe's, what he brought up today, why did we waive a fifty-dollar fee? Why, why are we waiving any fee for a temporary liquor license or for a raffle? Or why are, why are we paying for trolley cars to go to see the lights or to go to the Halloween Parade? I mean, if you take away something, we're being hypocrites if we don't take away everything then. And, and I think there is more to the core things that we've stated, and that's why we have this second part of our budget that talks about discretionary spending. Yes, the core we're not going to touch, but discretionary things are what make a town, and certainly in this case. I, I think it's important, Darien is starved for entertainment, and it is one day of entertainment or three days of entertainment for the Darien Fest. We have no movie theaters. We have no theater. We have no music venues. This is, you know, four days between the two events of entertainment for people and inexpensive entertainment for people. And I think everyone else said, praised the, the value of the, of the parade and, and although my kids are older now and don't attend Darien Fest like they did, when they were young, they did, and it was valuable at that point. So I think, I'd like to keep all of the money going to both of those events at this time.
Tina?
I like what you say, Tom, that it is a very small park. And I'm very, I would be very happy to hear you come up with something bigger that you'd like to cut then. Because like you say, we do chip away at the little things.
We do. We also spend a lot of money on things like, we did put a lot of money into the Darien Historical Society. And, and if you want to look at that, that building is open two hours a month, once...
It's going up to four, but that's my, but, but that's my argument.
So it's open one day.
You, you cannot say that I have not been fighting against these and for every charitable organization all the way.
You've been very consistent, Mike.
Thank you.
I'm just saying that i-if we're, if we're going to only do core values, then let's only do core values and, and get rid of everything. And, and I don't, I really don't want to do that. I'm really not suggesting we do that, but I think we'd be in hypocritical if, if we, we pick and choose certain things.
Tom?
Yes, a quick comment, I think Steve mentioned as well, that I got the similar feedback from a lot of my neighbors I talked to about this event. Have a lot of retirees, older citizens in my district, and one item they brought up is that they have a lot of family that comes from out of town, grandkids that come, aunts and uncles that, only in the summer, they can really come and visit Darien. And one of the reasons they come visit Darien is for this parade and to celebrate Fourth of July. So the feedback I received was, "Really want to keep this in our community and sponsor it." So I'm in, I'm in favor of keeping it, so.
I think when you listen to, um, earlier talking about all the things that the Lions Club does and how it impacts a community. And that during that seventeen-minute exchange that we had, we were probably not thinking of the, we were not thinking of the, the broad spectrum of what it does to a community. And, you know, Treasure Corning, you and I agree with this on a, on a lot, on a lot of basis, you know, in the four years, the three and a half years I've been here. But I do see the value of the Lions Club's parade because it is what makes Darien a nice place to live. It is when, as a Realtor, I can go back and explain to people when I'm showing homes in Darien, you know, all the different things and, you know, what should make them move into our town as opposed to some, someplace else. So I, you know, I do believe that that's a good thing. I would like to, you know, sit back and sharpen the pencils for next year and to your point where the chamber is making plans now for a September event, and the Lions Club is making plans now for a July event, and you're going to tell them on May first, you know, no-go. You've got to reconsider that. I think we would be responsible, the thing for us to do is to go forward this year and, you know, make those fundings, but just know what the, what the temperature is of, of our financial situation, especially with what's going on with the, with the states. Now, that being said, elections are next week. There's, you know, rumors that talk about how that election process may, you know, fit budgets. Maybe, maybe it benefits us in the long run, but I think for now, we, we probably should just, you know, move forward this year, but next year, know that we may not be able to.
Tina?
Well, I wanted to say that, you know, the position here is very difficult as far as what you were saying with hypocrites. I, I don't think it's as simple as that because, you know, all of these organizations have such good things that they all bring to the table. And, you know, the historical society versus this versus that, it's really hard, just like in your home budget. You know, you, you kind of just don't say, well, you know, all across the board, nothing. You know, you kind of do pick and choose what is more effective and what goes a longer way, and there's a lot of other things to consider. And, you know, one of the components that I don't think sunk in as much was the community effect on taking these things away. So certainly, my position is, if we're going down the road of discussion of increasing revenues through a gas tax or through some beverage incremental, there is no way that I don't want to support these things then because now I have, you know, it just doesn't make sense. So the bottom line is, we're going to have to be creative with some revenue side. And if we're going down that road, which it sounds like they're, you know, we're serious about having those discussions, then I wouldn't want to take away some of the few things that we do enjoy and the little perks that we do have in this community. So I agree with that. As far as the, I think the parade is, just speaks for itself. I mean, that's just a hands-down community event. Everybody can enjoy it. It's, it's just a great, a great coming together type of thing. With the Darien Fest is a little bit of a different animal, particular for me because that's my ward, and I do get a lot of complaints, so, you know, of all the disruption. So, you know, you know, that's, since I'm here to represent what I'm hearing, you know, I had to throw that in there. But it's clear that my constituents, as far as the parade go, are, are hands down that I don't think they want to see that taken away.
Ted? Yeah, Joe, please.
Tom, to answer your question, when I, when I spoke that night, I wouldn't have spoken anti-fest, but I was speaking anti-what currently now. It brings an element into Darien that I don't know if we will be wanting Darien. Twenty-five years ago, when it started, it was a celebration of the businesses in Darien. And it really, it, it was more community-oriented, and a lot of us went to it, and it was very different then. Now it is a very different animal. And what I was trying to communicate that night is, I really want the chamber to go back and rethink what they do. I'm not against a fest, and I would support supporting them with police overtime if they came up with the concept of a fest that I really felt was representative of this community. But how many people don't go to Darien Fest anymore? A lot. How many Darien residents don't go to the fest? I had somebody come up to me Saturday night, and they made the comment, "Why are you paying six thousand dollars for this event so two hundred people can come to have a party for one person?" When that's not representative of twenty-two thousand people who... When that's not representative of twenty-two thousand people who live in this city? And, you know, and that makes sense when you think about it. So I don't want this council or this audience to think I'm anti-paying for a fest. I'm anti-paying for overtime for a fest that I don't feel serves the purposes of the city anymore. That's how I feel.
I'm going to just make the statement, and I'm pretty sure that the Darien Chamber is probably going to end up changing a lot, and I shouldn't make a big statement, but I think there's going to be big changes with the Darien Fest for next year. I know their costs are going way, way up, and I've heard some of the costs of, you know, from Claire and so forth. I'm going to make the statement again, like I said before, I think it's just, it showcases us very, very well. I know none of us here are going to support the Fourth of July fireworks, we're not even going to bring that up, but I'd like to take a pulse and see what everybody feels. Obviously, let's start with the Fourth of July parade, who's in favor of it? Okay, so we got six oh on that one. What's everybody's thoughts on Darien Fest? Who's in favor of it? So we got two, and we're still down four on this whole thing. Okay, all right. So we'll keep that one out then, for all intents and purposes. If anybody else wants to talk about it later on, let us know.
So for the sake of the people in the audience, we're going to be putting that money back in there for the parade.
For the parade, correct. What other things?
You have a question?
Yes, Steve.
So first of all, not so much on behalf of the Lions Club, but on behalf of the community, we thank you. And the only correction I wanted to get up here and make was, somebody called this the Lions Club Parade. It's not. It's the community's parade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What other things we had to talk about on the budget?
Revenues.
Okay.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I go back to the, um, the fest?
Yes.
Then, since there's two in favor and the rest not, I think just the statement that I wanted to make was, you know, I think it, I still want to leave it open pending what the decision is for the Darien, for the, uh, fest, like what is their plans? So they would keep us in the loop of what their plans would be and see if, I mean, they may come back with a different proposal, let's say, right? And I would want to keep an open mind at that point.
Yeah, I'm waiting from Claire. Yeah, at this point, I mean, the park, the, um, Chamber approached the Park District about moving it over to Sportsplex, and, and, you know, they are talking about a number of things, and, um, the intention prior to the council's decision was to, again, have it another year in its current location, but I still have to wait for Claire now, given, you know, this, that they would need to raise this additional revenue, what effect that has, so as soon as we hear, I'll certainly get that to the council.
Do you think it'd be beneficial, Tina, if we have Claire come to the next council meeting and talk about what some of the updates that she's looking to do?
I personally don't think that that would help.
You don't think so?
I don't think they, I don't think they know, Brian. I talked to Corinne Saturday.
No, they're, they're, they're up in the air, yeah, I mean, yeah.
I think it would be okay to communicate when they know more to-
Yeah, I, I think that, that, that's kind of what I'm waiting for now.
Okay.
There's not, I mean, if, if, if we're not giving, you know, uh, if we're not funding the police protection and those expenses, there's really not much for the city to get involved with until waiting to hear. I mean, it's not like we permit, you know, the carnival we would, but it's really between them and the Park District, so. I mean, I'll certainly update Claire tomorrow and talk to her and see if, you know, and let her know, when, when they have anything more definitive, at least let the city know.
Gotcha. Okay, let's move into revenues.
Just one thing on that, I'm sorry. Uh, so seven fifty for municipal is also going to be brought back for the parade for barricades. Is that a good number for, I mean, I, you told me that was last year.
The numbers I had, yeah, the number I had today in my email came, yeah, right from the, uh, expense of the barricades, the public work. So basically, those, the five thousand and some change, I will make sure it's reflective in the budget.
Well, just because the budget was for two thousand for the barricades, and now that we're only doing it for one event.
It'll be half of that, one thousand dollars, yes.
Okay, but was it, I guess my point was, it didn't seem like it was fifty-fifty.
It was pretty, yeah, it was, we used some of our barricades for the Darien Fest. So in combination of that, they were pretty close, um, but a thousand dollars for the parade would be more than enough.
So now we're going to move into revenues, and we're going to discuss this a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, two, two quick things on revenues, again, just, you know, we, we talked about this, but, uh, again, small reminders. The, um, included in the revenue items now is a waiver of the building permit fees that the council has had for a few years. So right now, if the city council decided that, you know, hey, we waived permit fees for a few years, we, you know, that, that's fine, um, we don't want to do it anymore, I would add twenty thousand dollars of revenue under the building permit over the next few years. That's one item. Uh, again, you know, obviously that twenty thousand dollar almost equates to the festival amounts, but, um, again, that, that, we already had talked about that. And secondly, if the council is looking for money, we do have about two hundred thousand that I'll just call on reserve with ERM, our risk management agency, that we have left with them, because it earns, certainly earns better interest, and it may help us over the period of time if we have any particular larger increases in our work, in our property and casualty insurance. I don't anticipate those, ERM is a well-run municipal, you know, organization that has, is, is a very strong financial. But again, if this, if the city council says, well, gee, I, I need a hundred thousand dollars somewhere, I just want to reiterate that that's there um, in case you want to talk about it.
Okay.
And then after those two, what I'll call more minor, basically was the, uh, items in the memo that I had sent out on March fourth. I listed several revenue options and also included a couple of, um, a few exhibits that reflect, uh, revenue changes. Partic- I looked at the larger, um, potential revenue sources, looked at property taxes, and at least in this scenario, it shows no increase to the property taxes. It does show a local gasoline tax of five cents added to each gallon, and it shows a two percent local food and beverage tax, uh, that would be applied to food and beverages alcoholic and non-alcoholic, which are consumed on premises. And, and it, again, in the exhibit, it shows the potential revenue per year, and the exhibits show the effect of that cumulative over, over a three-year period. And I, I, again, you know, I, I don't want to reiterate the whole memo itself, explanatory, I think it's important here from the council.
Oh, I just, I, one of the things for the people at home, I just want people to understand this. Um, one of the biggest things that we're obligated to pay is the police pension. And I put it in perspective, I just want everybody to understand this. In fiscal year ending ten, I believe our pension obligation per the state, okay, is nine hundred and thirty-six thousand. By the end of fiscal year ending nineteen, we're going to be at one point seven, yeah, one point seven million. It's an increase of about eighty-two percent, basically, in nine years. That's nothing that we're basically, that is, how do I put this? This is what the state is mandating us for to, to fill on in. It's a huge chunk of change. For all intents and purposes, we're at a million two right now, we're going to go in, in, by the end of fiscal year nineteen, the next for five hundred thousand dollars. And again, this is just one of those of, of costs that we cannot control, but the state is mandating us. And I think that's one of the big things that's driving a lot of our, you know, thoughts on that one section, as well as our capital projects. I just wanted to make that statement, so.
Well, it's, it's not really the state mandating, it's a function of your employment.
Correct.
I mean, you decide to employ certain officers, and then the actuary calculates what the contribution is necessary to, to fund that pension, uh, so.
But, I mean, but that's our obligation.
Is there, is there an anticipated number for futures, knowing based on what we have on our, on our staff, to anticipated pensions?
Well, the actuarial report is based on the actual, uh, census of the employees that we have at, every April thirtieth.
That's my thought.
So the number that we have for next year is based on the employees we had last April thirtieth. It'll be updated by the actuary as of this April thirtieth. It does assume five point five percent salary increases, and it does assume a seven percent investment return. Uh, those, uh, amounts could change depending on the police pension board and state mandates. State can change the mandates, there's been some thought that that, maybe that rate of return is too high, since typically, uh, most of the funds are investing half in equities and half in fixed income. Uh, everybody knows fixed income's not returning much anymore. We've been pretty fortunate, the, in terms of the salary increases the last couple of years, the contract was pending, so we really had zero salary increases, aside from the step increases. Uh, now that's going to be changing this year because we do have the new contract, so we know what those amounts are going forward.
And it, and it anticipates, you know, promotions and the individual taking a pension four months later, correct? That was, that was, that was a bad joke, I shouldn't have even said that, forgive me.
And, and it, it does, Joe, if this is part of what you're asking too, it just gives us a hard number for one year. After that hard number for one year, in our budget, we anticipate an increase, but the actuarial report gives us that number for only one year.
Okay.
Although it uses a lot of assumptions that will, you know, that will look out for many years, but that number is just one for the tax levy.
Right, so that was going to be my question too. So the nineteen number is us making an educated guess based on-
It's Brian projecting some tentative increase then.
Based on what the most recent actuarial report was.
Well, you, no, it's, I, I wish there was more of a science to it, Tom.
It's a swag.
It is, I mean, you do look historically, you know, here's some things I might look at, a- as Mike mentioned. You know, now there was a union contract that settled, there were some, there were some wages that were, were owed retroactively. Um, for new officers that are hired, that are first-time, uh, officers, they fall into a little different pension category, so, uh, based on the law change. So, again, I put in there about a ten percent, trying to be conservative. I don't think it's, you know, if it's less than that, great, I'm hoping it's not more than that, but, but we adjust it, uh, at that time, so I, we've been, you know, we've been actually pretty close, except one year, and Mike, it, it actually did not increase, if I'm not mistaken.
This, this past year, the last two years, it was consistent, before we had the jump going into this current, future fiscal year.
Pretty consistent, but that, that was anomaly, it will be more consistently increasing because the wages are increasing, things like that.
And that was a function of, we had no contract.
And, yeah, exactly.
And then we had the over seven percent return in the market.
So are we saying we're not going to be anticipating the same level of increases after nineteen? Or, or are we, are we catching up to an extent as to, is why? I mean, a five hundred dollar, a five hundred thousand dollar increase over a three-year period, it seems like a, a lot.
Well, it is, but don't forget the actuary, I mean, when these people retire, they're, as you hear everything in the state, there are three percent annual COLA adjustments for all the retired people. And you take that number and you compound it after a period of years, it adds up very quickly. Uh, also, there is catch-up. I, we are under fund, I mean, since I've been elected, we have been funding, thanks to you guys agreeing with me, we've been funding it at a hundred percent. Prior to that, I don't know that it was funded at a hundred percent, so we're actually only funded to the extent of sixty-two percent right now. The state only requires us to go up to ninety percent, so if we do have a budget crunch, this is another thing we could do. We could just tell the PD that, well, we don't want to fund it at a hundred percent this year because we are allowed the ninety percent latitude and see where things fall twenty-six years from now. I know that won't be our problem, that's not the way I've ever felt about addressing situations, so.
Hopefully, we don't have a period like we had over the last, you know, fifteen or so years, where the state was enhancing benefits. You know, that added more than, more than normal increases, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that those types of things have gone away.
I guess my question was, is the, are the increases going to level out at some point, or are they going to stay at this? I mean, we don't know.
Well, I, I would assume, I mean, if, assuming we make seven percent on our money and assuming five and a half percent salary increases, which between the step and the contracts, uh, it's probably not unrealistic to assume that they would continue going up.
Michael, do you, how does, how does the actuary look at retirements where people are retired and new people come in at lower pay? How does that impact actuarial figures for pension?
Well, he takes, I mean, first of all, the person that retired actually is a draw in the plan, and he knows what those are, and they get their three percent COLA increases, and they've got a life expectancy. He has tables that determine their life expectancy, if they retire at fifty-five. I don't know exactly what they pro- project, whether it be twenty, twenty-five, thirty years of retirement. There's a spousal benefit also. Uh, the newer person naturally would get, as Brian indicated, the new hires, if you're not hiring them. If they were employed prior to, what is it, two thousand and eleven, I believe, Brian? Then they fall under the old scenario where they get more generous retirement benefits than somebody just out of school, like most of our new PD hires are under the new slower, slower, smaller plan. Uh, it's not dramatically less, it's still a very nice retirement plan, but it's not as aggressive as the older plan. So, yes, that would be the lower amount, but he's already been projecting that, we've already had several of them in that. So even with that being said, we still went up over two hundred thousand dollars this year.
Are we a decidedly younger group of police officers, or are we getting younger? Seems like we're getting younger with hires and stuff.
Well, I mean, you have people retiring that are typically of retirement age, and you hire, you know, we've hired, most of the hires, um, have not come from departments, a couple have, where they're, may, maybe have had some experience, but, yeah, the, the average age, I'm sure, the average age of officers is certainly lower, but, you know, they, as Mike said, they take that into account when they project over the thirty-year period.
So we're not going to see a leveling off, we're going to see increase.
I, I don't see any unless the state is able to come to some agreement that, that changes pension plans to modify the benefits that are being granted, because, well, you see what happens with our salaries, even though our salaries, we've kept them reasonably under control, but even two and a half, three percent increases in their salaries over a twenty-five or thirty-year working life expectancy, that gets to a pretty healthy number, and then they're entitled seventy-five percent of that number if they have thirty years' experience, uh, the day they retire.
Mike, what would change that number is over time, you know, i- if, if for some reason the actuarial said, wow, interest rates for the next twenty years are going to be at twelve percent, you know, something like that would materially change it, but as lo- as long as we're creeping along with similar assumptions.
Although the opposite side of that is if you have interest rates running at twelve percent, it means you have inflation, which means we're not going to get by with two and a half percent salary increases either. You're going to be looking at the early eighties where people are getting ten, fifteen, twenty percent salary increases.
My point is, I don't anticipate it going down, it's only going to factor of, of, if you get some more catch-up at some point, because, again, because we're, I, a lot of people don't understand the percent funded also, but that's, that's allowable as long as by an X date in the future, we're at that either, you know, the hundred percent fully funded pension plan.
Right, there's twenty-six years remaining on that. The state said that you had thirty years, and that was four years ago, although we were down to about twenty years, and then they extend, they kick that out ten years again, so they keep changing, they keep kicking their pants.
So for about twenty-seven years, I don't anticipate anything less than this.
I wasn't talking about going down, I was just wondering if the increase is leveling off.
Well, I know, but Joe's eyes were lighting up just a tad, maybe, but.
Well, I was wondering if it was at least level, level off.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, with new hires versus retirees. Because a lot of schools, schools would force retirement by making benefits for older teachers to, but see, the, the school districts weren't paying those costs, the same thing.
Okay, so we're going to finish this discussion tomorrow, okay? Anything else you guys want to talk?
Um, I, 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 maybe I misunderstood, only I had anticipated, although it's getting late, to get some feedback on the, on these revenues. I think tomorrow we were planning on the water, you know, getting into the water fund.
Through the funds, exactly.
And I don't know that everybody's commented, at least on what I handed out, I'd like to get some feedback on the, on this document.
Okay.
So I know where we're at.
Yeah, I'd like to go over the, the food and beverage one. I don't quite follow the numbers, so, um, there's eight hundred thousand listed here with a two percent add-on. Can you tell me where that's calculating from?
Yeah, a previous handout I distributed to the council has a, a line item of about four hundred thousand under, um, under one of the categories.
Food?
Four hundred, yeah, four hundred and twelve thousand.
There's a four hundred and ninety-four thousand under food, and then there's a four hundred and twelve thousand under drinking.
That's the four hundred and twelve, so I rounded to four hundred, and that, well, you know what, that first category, Mike, we don't have anything in that category. That's more like a Kohl's or some shopping centers.
But still, where does the eight hundred come from?
So the, i- if that four hundred number you're looking at is equivalent to our Home Rule sales tax of one percent, uh, on food and beverage.
Okay.
So I took that, you know, that's one percent, so I, yeah, it was simple math, two percent would be doubling that number.
Okay, so that represents one percent what I'm looking at? Okay, so as far as the scenarios presented, um, I like that tax was taken out. Yeah, property tax was just not listed as far as putting in any numbers, I think that's, that's a good thing. Um, as far as the actual scenarios go then, between gas and local food and beverage, I think to keep, you know, the infrastructure going, obviously, you know, um, we just have to do something. And, and these are, these are numbers that over time can really make a difference. Um, I, I'm leaning, I'm not, I'm not liking both at the same time. The gasoline tax, I'm leaning less on, and the, the reasoning with that is because, um, in my opinion, if you want to do something like this, what I want to do is not hurt the working citizens or, you know, hurt the, you know, a, a large population of, of what the whole American thing is. You know, you go to work, you work hard, you, you know, you do this and that. So as far as gas goes, there's still a lot of people struggling, um, everywhere, so, you know, if they have jobs that they need to get to, I don't want them having to pay a little more, and I certainly don't want them going outside the limits to try to make up for something. Now, we're in a situation where the gas is cheaper now, but, you know, you turn that around and gas prices are going up where we've seen them, and it really hurts, you make those kind of decisions. Um, and it's not something that's announced, so it could be like hit from behind, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to do that as much. Whereas the food and the beverage one, to me, is more of a luxury anyway. I mean, if you're, if you're struggling and, and you need to cut on your own budget, that's probably one of the first things you're going to do is say, I'm not going to go out to eat as much, or I'm not going to go to a restaurant. So, so in my mind, that has more justification than any of them, because if they're going to eat, out to eat, then they already made that decision that, you know- then they already made that decision that, you know, they're going to spend something. And like I told, I think I told you this at the, when we were together at the Citizen of the Year. You know, when I'm tipping, I usually just tip off the top and, you know, don't back out the tax, you know, and that kind of stuff. So if people were to want to cut their costs a little bit more, even though they're going out to eat still, you know, that's one way to do it. They can kind of reverse a little bit what they've built in. I know a lot of people do that. So that, to me, was the less offensive strategy.
And again, just to put it in perspective, twenty gallons, you know, you fill up a car for twenty gallons, it's a buck. I mean, you know, just, it always helps, I think, to give it a dollar number, put in perspective, in terms of the gas tax.
Or weave or whatever, you know, it's, it's just, again, I, that's my feeling. That's the least offensive.
My, my mother's a waitress, Tina. Thank you. I appreciate them.
It's always somebody.
Anybody else's thoughts on this?
Yeah, I think Tina says a lot of very realistic, very real expectations. I agree, I agree with her wholeheartedly on that. There's no control of, of the gas. I mean, like she says, if you, she wants, you want to go to a restaurant and you want to, you want to buy chicken instead of steak, you have that option. But when you go to get gas, you're, you're paying a dollar ninety-nine or in this case, a dollar, or two dollars and four cents a gallon. You, you don't have that much of a control with it. We do need to get the revenue in there, so I'd be, I'd be more inclined for the, the food tax because, you know, our residents can control that a little better than the gas tax.
One, one comment just to keep in mind, e, even if the city was not looking to increase revenues, I would think that, or ask that they discuss, you know, both of these taxes. Because if you think about it and you want, let's say the council wanted the gasoline tax and it generated five hundred thousand, you can't abate property tax five hundred thousand. So this isn't necessarily maybe discussing, discussion on only the increase of revenues, but the mix of revenue. So just something for, you know, as you're talking through this, if, if you think the property tax even less, less, reducing the burden on residents, you know, that could be an offset, but just something that came to mind.
Just a quick comment to Tina's point of view is that with regards to fuel, you do make a decision whether you have a fuel-efficient vehicle or you do not. And recently, inefficient fuel vehicles have been sold quite a bit, so I don't think the gas is that big of an issue because you make a decision between an F-150 that gets ten miles to a gallon or maybe a small Honda that gets thirty-five. So you do have some input to how much you pay for fuel and that has more of an input versus, you know, I think the five cents of per gallon of gas. So I would be okay with the fuel.
See, one of the reasons why I'm in support of it is the three of the big gas stations that we have in the city of Darien, and I'm not talking about the Speedway, the new one. The first one I always talked about is the one right off of Lamont Road that's literally, it's surrounded, I mentioned this, between Lamont and Woodridge. And that's a lot of Lamont and Woodridge people that go through there, so it's not really affecting city of Darien people per se. The other two is the Circle K in the Shell that's right off of I-55 and I think we get a lot of highway people to come on in there to get gas as well. If you take a look at the Shell station, it's always ten cents higher than everybody else in the city of Darien. So I just look at that as an opportunity to, you know, for gas revenue that's going to basically affect everybody across the board, but not necessarily one hundred percent of the people in Darien, especially we have people coming off of I-55 as well as Lamont and Woodridge. And that's one of the reasons why I supported it.
Again, just to keep in mind, what I tried to put together is something that would generate enough revenue. If, if, if one of these, like the, you know, maybe the gasoline tax is not adopted, it's just a, over three years, a million and a half dollar hole that we'll have to, again, talk about or, or affect projects, but.
Tom, what were you saying?
Yeah, two questions. One, do we know what our neighboring communities charge on, or have regarding the gasoline tax and the food and beverage tax?
I know Woodridge, I, you know, I think they're at two and they had talked about going up to four. Downers, I think, I think two is a little more the norm, you know, I checked, I checked this time, but I don't have it in my head. I would have to review that again. For gasoline.
Okay, and what about food and beverage?
I don't believe Woodridge, that I would have to check. I don't recall offhand who has the food and beverage.
I mean, I would like to stay consistent with, with the other communities they're doing because I don't want to hurt our businesses by having higher taxes on something that would cause people to not shop or buy gas in Darien. The second thing was, when, when were we planning on implementing this? And would, would it make sense to try to do it in a gradual way where we maybe don't go for up one point three million the first year and, and ease into it?
The numbers I have are, are, a May one would be a May one increase, yes. It would be an ordinance to the city council and then we'd have some work to do, but.
So.
But you could break it up.
Yeah, yeah, you can do, again, I just, it, you know, I would just have to go back and, and give the, show the effect, oops, on the exhibits that were attached, but.
And my thought on that was we could, we would have a year of, of figuring out whether this did affect business in any way. I mean, it, it doesn't seem like it's a big number, but it might be to someone else.
Right, okay. Joe, did you?
I think when we sit down and we talk about where we're going to be three years out and we look at our projects, our infrastructure projects, I think it's unrealistic not to look at the possibility of raising revenue. I think for us to sit back and say, well, we don't want to do a gas tax because of the way it might impact people or we don't want to do a food tax because of the way it might impact people. Then we can't also say that we're concerned about where we're going to be in three years because here's an opportunity to deal with that. So while I would look at something that was implemented in part, I would, actually would support the five cents and I would support the tax on the food. Because I think as Ted said, the, the gas tax is something that's probably picked up by a lot of people who travel through Darien and don't actually live in Darien and it doesn't impact our residents as much. And as Tina said and as everybody else said, people can choose whether they go out to eat and consume food and alcohol. So I, actually, I, I'm on board with, with each of these because I'm looking where we might be in three years and what this would do for us to implement this as of May first this year.
I'd just like to throw out a couple of thoughts here. Number one, city of Chicago, all the big cities, you always hear liquor tax and cigarette tax. Is anything like that available to us? I don't see any specific category for liquor, but I mean, we do sell a lot of liquor, whether it be restaurants, we have quite a few liquor stores.
Yeah, I mean, a Home Rule, as a Home Rule community, we're, you know, we're, we have flexibility. And, and as I look, there are things like cigarette tax and, and alcohol tax and.
Because of sin taxes always seem to be more popular, but I'm not, I was just raising that just I just wasn't sure whether it was viable.
A little bit harder to estimate, Mike. These, these were a bit easy, you know, the, the gasoline revenue, we did use.
Right, we have numbers.
Yeah, I mean, we used generic numbers and averages from our neighboring communities. That's, that, you know, whatever amount, if, if it was adopted, you know, the first year would tell us how many gallons are actually pumped. I bet five thou, five hundred thousand is our best estimate at this point.
Yeah, I'm not trying to burst anybody's bubble here, but like if we raise the food and beverage tax two percent, I don't think you can just do that effective May first. From what, if I'm, I'm correct, Paul, you might know a little bit better. I think the state only allows increases in your sales tax rate twice a year. I believe it's July first and January first. Do you know any different?
Well, that, Mike, that's with our Home Rule sales tax under the statute. This is a Home Rule food and beverage similar to our amusement tax. This is we collect.
Oh, so they would have to file a separate tax return? Businesses would have to do a separate tax return?
Well, they would do, what they would do with our amusement taxes, they would file to us on a monthly basis.
So the businesses would actually have to do another?
Yeah, like our amusement tax. So if somebody, you know, somebody in town pays amusement tax, every month they send to us. And it would be similar on, on both of these would be similar.
Okay, and how do you, okay, and where do we get that number from? Is that an honor system for the two percent?
Same as we do utility. You, you would, they have to fill out some, they would have to fill out forms. And I don't know how we verify that, but we would probably have to be something with the state or, or some honor syst, you know. I don't want to say honor system. There's got to be a way to check that. I don't know of how you double-check that. I just know how the revenue is collected in the municipalities.
And lastly, I guess I would, as much as I hate raising property taxes, I just want to throw out something consideration because as we've been talking about the pension increases and, I mean, that's essentially where a lot of our money's been going. In terms of real estate taxes, you as an individual, when you file your personal tax return, there's a couple of things you get. Number one, you get an itemized deduction, assuming you itemize, you get a deduction for your real estate taxes on your federal taxes, which saves you some money there. There's also a five percent credit you get against your Illinois income tax. So if your state taxes, if your real estate taxes went up a hundred dollars, you get a five hundred dollar reduction, five dollar reduction, I'm sorry, on your Illinois income tax return as well as whatever you might get if you itemize. Now, again, not everybody itemizes, but there is some benefit there. The detriment is, yeah, it's residents, only residents or resident business owners that are paying that as opposed to drawing everybody from off the street. So again, just throwing that out as an idea, maybe some consideration would be, because this year we can't do anything about the real estate taxes, but maybe going forward, we use that real estate, the increase in the pension fund as a, a real estate tax increase. Because again, it wouldn't be dollar for dollar out of everyone's pocket. There are some mitigating amounts there.
And we had talked about that, Mike, we had talked about that, Mike, and I looked at it. And because of the revenue generated by the two, of two other sources, I didn't put any more of the property tax in there. But certainly, it's a pie. How you slice it, it just depends, but.
But especially getting back to Alderman Belzak's point, if we wanted to experiment and cut one back a percent or two, experiment with a lower amount and maybe have the real estate tax pick up a portion of it. Again, just throwing it all out for discussion and consideration now with the council once again.
Yeah, I think historically, real estate tax has always been the most sensitive. Now, I could be right or wrong on that, but in every town I've been in, that is still what people look at, what they judge by and, and what they see once a year, right, you know, on their tax bill, so it's been more sensitive.
But the communities are looking at the rates.
Right, and the fact of the matter is, a lot of people don't look at it on a line-by-line basis. I have residents tell me all the time, it's expensive to live in Darien. And I have to point out to them what it costs them to live in Darien. And then they look at their tax bill and they see that. You ra, you raise it and it goes up, they're going to be more critical.
Yeah, I think the important, you know, exhibit to look at, you know, is probably the capital project. It, I mean, the effect of these, you know, I mean, it's not just, you know, me throwing out these numbers. It was, you know, it was a calculation to make sure the city has money sufficient in the capital projects. Now, I think in year three, I showed a balance of about a million and a half dollars. And I thought that that was good because as, you know, that was the forecast going on a couple more years. So again, you know, it, any, any changes to those revenues with, with, would impact those final numbers.
Could we get the numbers from Woodridge as well as Downers on the gas tax for, I'm just curious on that.
Yeah, and, and one of the things we talked at there, I think the diff, why I wasn't as concerned is because we don't have intersections, you know, like if, if it was Lamont Road and Seventy-Fifth and there was all gas stations, that'd be a corner-to-corner comparison. Our gas stations are not. I mean, you're not.
They're all islands.
They're all islands, so I didn't look at that as important. We can get that. I mean, that's all in the, in their codebooks. And, and I'm recalling it was two or three percent, but I can check that, sure.
In the restaurant part, you can check?
Sure.
So we'll get back to that tomorrow then? Would that be all right for tomorrow's?
We can, yeah, I mean, we can conclude that tomorrow and then.
We have to make the decision, Brian.
Pardon me?
When do we have to make the decision? This week?
Well, what I would like to do is, if possible, finish up the, the budget discussions tomorrow, which would conclude with the water fund. And, you know, that's no rosy picture this year, looking out, so that will be some discussion. I mean, it, it doesn't matter to me. We could have as many meetings, but I, and it would anticipate it. If we can conclude the revenues tonight and then look at the water fund tomorrow. And if there's a couple outstanding questions, we certainly can get those answered, but it would be interesting to, you know, again, I don't know if you want to poll yet.
Yeah, let's do a quick poll, okay.
Or you want to wait till you get the questions answered. Either ways.
I, I'm in favor of doing something. I guess my question is.
So we can get those tomorrow night and we would start with maybe this revenue and then move into the water fund.
Yeah, I, I plan on finishing up tomorrow. I mean, but yeah, if we can get those numbers, that'd be terrific.
And then also, you know, make sure the council does or does not want to continue to waive the permit fees. We can finish that tomorrow.
Brian, quick question. On a permit fees, does that include like the hotel that's coming in as well or are they waived or no?
No, it's primarily fences and sheds, home improvement types of things. Any new construction like our homes on Manning, those have not been exempted. They're paying their fees, but mostly, yeah, remodeling type jobs. And which was an, trying to encourage residents. In some cases, it's twenty bucks. In some cases, it might be sixty. But I could tell you at least the residents are very surprised when they come in for permits at, again, twenty, forty bucks saved here, but.
Has it worked? Have, have we had more home improvements in the last two years than we did in the two previous?
Well, the economy's.
It's all different.
Based on the economy, based on the look of the town, I would say yes. You know, based on having conversations with Home Depot and some of the residents they've dealt with in, in the protest section, my answer is yes.
I don't think anybody's going to put a new riff on because they save twenty bucks, Tom. You know, I really don't think that it, that we can equate the waiver of twenty or forty dollars to somebody actually deciding. Now, I know it, what it did matter, somebody was coming in for a permit and we had, were telling people that we might not have the waiver after May first and, and they're interested in getting their permit in before. So that was one indication that it certainly was appreciated.
But if the purpose was to generate people doing it and if, I, I think the important answer is, has it worked? Because if, if it works, then I'd be more inclined to waiving it still, but if it, if it's same, then it's twenty thousand dollars that we could use.
Four years ago, I think when we implemented it, the concrete program, that was a perfect example. People were on board with, you know, the concrete program. It was real, I think the first year we did a couple hundred thousand dollars in private work. Now it's dwindled down, okay? It's dwindled down. A lot, a lot of people have replaced their driveways, maybe some costs, so.
But I, I, I can't answer that, Tom, nor can I pretend to answer that one. It's just, that one's more of a, again, an art than a science. Like, nothing indicates that we have had more because we waived it, though.
If we bring it back in, we'll be able to answer that question next year.
Yeah, that's when, that's when we'll get more feedback when it gets taken.
All right, then we'll revisit this tomorrow. Let's move to questions, comments, announcements of a general nature from any of the aldermen. Anything at all? Okay, anybody in the audience? We're all gone.
Oh, yeah.
What's that?
Darien Lyons Pancake Breakfast is Sunday, March the eighteenth. Twenty, that's what I said.
You no longer need a surcharge on the ticket price? Is that true?
What's the, what's the location for it?
Any, any other comments? Do you have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Kenny, Second Alderman Belkey. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
See y'all tomorrow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.